Call this meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. It is February 1st, 2016, 6:00 PM. And tonight, our invocation is going to be led by Commissioner Josh Lael. And our pledge of allegiance is going to be led by Vice Chairman Milton Campbell. If you all would, please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this evening. Thank you for allowing us to gather here together to attempt the county's business. Dear Heavenly Father, please be with the decisions we make. Please help those decisions benefit each and every citizen of the county. Thank you especially for the folks that keep us safe on daily basis. Our police, fire departments, EMS, and also the armed services. Dear Lord, be with us through the rest of this meeting. Help us to glorify you in what we do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Sleet.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. This first item is a Commissioner's report. Does anyone have anything they'd like to report?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a kind of an announcement on my own. I was just telling Josh, if the county's not growing but anyone else, my family's doing their part. I had a granddaughter, it was born, God bless her, with a granddaughter, Mackensley Austin. She was born Thursday at 9:24. And kind of amazing, Friday night at 10 o'clock, they were both home. Mom and baby's doing good. It's just a blessing, you know, that you can have that. And, you know, I'm just thankful for God's design on the family. And Mackensley has a brother, McCray, sister McKenna, cousin Victoria Reese. And, you know, I say they're doing well. And, you know, just wanted to tell everybody how proud I am of my grandkids. I love my children, love grandkids too. If you don't have any, just hang on. It's a good experience, you know. But, and I love Alexander County. Thank everyone for coming here tonight and just try to do the best we can. And I told myself, I've got, my family lives here in the county, all of them own property in the county, attended schools here in the county. And just thankful that we have a place we can rest and know that things are taken care of. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What are you known as? Grandpa, Grampy? Well, Poppy right now.
I think Ronnie's doing his part to get the school system filled up with more students, so.
Poppy Green. Anyone else?
I'd just like to make a comment. I know we're, upcoming budget meetings will be starting in the very near future. I think Chairman, I mean Commissioner Yoder and I are on the Finance Committee. And, you know, just for my part, where we had to go to last year for a spending level, I personally don't think we can go above that. So, you know, as people prepare their budgets, I think we need to keep that in mind, realistic, because I think sitting up here roughly however many months ago it was, passing a 12 and 1/2 cent tax increase did not feel good to me. So I think, you know, we learn to live within our means. That is the maximum of our means, in my opinion. So, you know, just as these departments start on your budgets, please know that we went, in my opinion, and I'm a Finance Committee member, as high as we could go, without something catastrophic happening to our county. Always put that caveat out there.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Thank you. Vice Chairman Campbell. I'll just mention two things. One, I have been sick, so if I start coughing and have to leave the room, Commissioner or Vice Chairman Campbell will take over. He was nice enough to bring about eight or nine cough drops here so that he didn't have to take over. So hopefully those will work. One other thing, the, I had a meeting at the Board of Elections Friday, and I just wanted to mention a few things. They are testing the new voting machines now. And I didn't know that they had to go through as much as they do to get those up and running and out for the citizens by March 15th. But they have to do a lot of testing. Also wanted to mention that early voting will start, let's see, of course, I don't have that here. Anyway, the early voting places that you can go is going to be the Board of Elections Office in Taylorsville, the Bethlehem Community Fire and Rescue, and new for this year will be the Stony Point Volunteer Fire Department Station, Station 1. So we're having a new early voting site. Absentee ballot requests are going to be accepted from January 25th to March 8th. And just keep in mind that the voting districts change. So just if you're in Gualtones, Little River, Sugarloaf, Sharps 1 and Sharps 2, Taylorsville, then you might want to make sure that you're going to the right place. So some of those have changed. They consolidated. Voter registration deadline is February 19th. The change party affiliation deadline is also February 19th. And if you have any questions, the number is here somewhere, you can call the Board of Elections at 632-2990. So I wanted to get those things out there. Also, you have the agenda before you. Is there any additions, deletions, changes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Save it.
Got a motion in second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. First item on the agenda is public comment. And we do have someone signed up to speak. Mr. Jim Belcher, is he here? Okay. All right, come on up, Mr. Belcher. If you would, just state your name and the community you live.
I'm Jim Belcher, and I live in the Bethlehem community.
Okay, thanks, sir.
And before my time starts, I'd like to ask permission to share one thing with you. We want to tell you, thank you for your service, and we do appreciate what you do. And the wife and I, before we leave the house every morning, we remember 1700 Highway Patrol, the Wilks, Alexander, and Ardell County law officers, and every county commissioner, and those that work with them. And so we pray for you every day.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
And we appreciate your service. And before my time starts, if I can say to the gallery, if you've got anything to say to these people, you may want to consider praying for them before you speak to them. You ought to make the commitment never to speak to men about God without speaking to God about the man. Pray for these men. They've got a hard job. And they were also placed in a position last meeting where they may not have fully understood that agenda. There may have been things that came up that they didn't know about. Have you ever been in a position or situation where you wished you'd have said something else and you didn't? If you did, have mercy on them. Pray for them. These men are here to help us.
And Mr. Belcher, let me, you mentioned something that I want to mention it to the public and so that, and the people listening. You mentioned about your time starting. So I want to read just so people will understand what, you know, this is a public comment period. The public comment period is intended to allow the Board of Commissioners an opportunity to listen to citizens' comments and concerns. It is not a time for the Board to discuss issues or answer impromptu questions. A time period of 15 minutes has been established for the public comment at the beginning of the first regular meeting in each month. Length of comment for each speaker is limited to three minutes. That's what Mr. Belcher was referring to. And if there is a group of people here to talk about one single subject, we just ask that a single spokesperson represent that group. Comments are to be directed to the Board as a whole and not to individual members. Citizens will be expected to be civil and courteous in their language and limit comments to issues of public concern. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Any citizens wishing to address the Board during public comments shall call the clerk to the Board prior to the meeting to have their name placed on the list. And that's kind of our, our agenda items on public comments. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
You're good, and I appreciate you, man. If you'll bear with me in my folly for a minute, I want to run a scenario by as far as the thoughts of economic development. If an individual in the county had indicated they were wanting to promote the use of marijuana, and they said something along the lines of, if we could get the county to lighten up on it a little bit, we could develop more sales in restaurants and gas, as they came in from other counties, maybe other states, probably not Colorado, but other states. And then they could say, we would appreciate them, the county commissioner, setting it up where they could make the preacher speak no more about the sins of sorcery, which is the using of drugs, mind alternating drugs. And if we could get them to put signs in the county buildings, and if we could have access to the county high school. And I realize this is something that's not even practical, but I want to encourage you men to consider, there are some people in the county that see what happened last meeting as just as foolish as that. One of the men came by here and spoke to you. It was their desire to stop the preaching. It was their desire to put signs in the door. They would have appreciated that. And they want to get into our high schools. By the way, those are our high schools. And we don't cotton to that. We don't want that brought into our high schools. So with that in mind, I want to compare a general statute, North Carolina State Article 90-94. Possession of marijuana is a misdemeanor charge. And it's wrong, and I'm not promoting that tonight, hear me. But there is another general statute, North Carolina Statute 14-177. It's a crime against nature. That carries, if convicted, a Class I felon charge. Now, the pot-smoking person that was promoting that, he's wrong. We preach against that also. But there's another crowd that's pushing another agenda. When two men come together, that is something that could be charged as a felony charge. Can I say today, that's not a lifestyle, that's a death style? You put two men on one island, and I don't recommend that, you'll defile the island. But two men on one island, don't check on them for 30 years. There's only going to be two people there or two piles of bones. They can't reproduce, so they have to recruit, and they're wanting to do it down at the high school. I stand against that. And I wish that you would. So with that in mind, you wouldn't further the cause of a pot smoker, and I won't either, I don't want you to, but please stop encouraging the sodomite sponsors as they mount this pulpit or this podium here. Two of the four commissioners that were here, when the man left, said, "Thank you." And I'll give you this, I've been in a position before where I answered just out of nervous energy. Two of you thanked him for being here. One of you nodded your head seven times, and the other remained silent. I appreciate the silence in a sense, but I'm telling you, in 2016, silence is acceptance. Your constituents looked for more of a response out of you than that. We wished you to stood up for. See, when we were in preparation for who to vote for, for the county commissioners, we did our research. We lived busy lives. We're unable to get to each individual. We couldn't know Josh Lael individually, but we could know Bethlehem Baptist Church. We couldn't know Ryan Mayberry, but we could know Taylorsville Presbyterian Church. We couldn't know and understand Ronnie Reese, but we could figure out what Macedonia stood for, Macedonia Baptist Church. We couldn't figure out what Larry Yoder stood for in his convictions, but we knew what First Baptist Church in Taylorsville stood for. We were looking for a man that would not drop his convictions, his biblical convictions, at the county door. Now, a note to those that are running for office. If you fail at this level, you can fail your church and your God, and that's the reason we're praying for you. We want you to be successful here and there. Now, in closing, your last meeting, the sodomite solicitor expressed interest in approval at the door. I'm gladly coming to you tonight, declaring to him and all that Jesus Christ is the door. In Genesis, Chapter 19 and 11, the sodomites were worried themselves trying to find the door. God blinded the sodomites. In John, Chapter 10 and verse 9, Jesus said, "I am the door." The sodomite solicitor also suggested changing churches. I am trying my dead-level best to respect him and you, but this is the common ground me and him came up on. The only thing I could agree with him on is the fact that a man ought to change a church. If you don't have a fire-breathing, God-fearing preacher that preaches against sodomy, you ought to change churches. I'm in agreement with that. Amen. Now, back to our closing. We do pray for them to come to know Christ and the free pardon of sin. We're not against them. We are truly for them. We pray that they'll come to know him, but we do not cotton to reprobates in our face pushing damnable doctrines. We will not put up with that. They were not made that way. If you couldn't stand up for me biblically, why didn't you stand up for me constitutionally? Why didn't you tell them that there's a First Amendment rights that give them preachers the right? If you don't like preaching, and you may, but if, why couldn't you stand up for me constitutionally? And tell them, they've got a right to say that. It's more than a right, it's a calling. And I feel like you men appreciate that calling. And we're put in a tight spot. I've spent hours trying to go to God on your behalf. We are for you. I'm just upset that the county let that slide. Well, here's my economic development strategy. I had tongue-in-cheek with the pot smoker, but I'm not joking here. I have enough confidence, and I may be crazy, but I have enough confidence in God Almighty that he could bless our county just for standing on biblical convictions. I'd look at our budget and see if we could save up enough money to ship that crowd over to Ardell County, into that large building that they've got, and then save enough money to give a "I'm sorry" note to Ardell County for doing it. We can do without that. I'm running out of time, and I'm going to respect that tonight. But by the way, you gave them nine minutes and 19 seconds. And I understand that. But the men of God are worthy of a double honor, and that's what they preach at your church. I'll open and close that door, and another man will open and close that door. But I'm telling you tonight, friend, when God shuts the door, no man openeth it. Thank you, and I'm going to continue praying for you. And if you can get a prayer out for this old boy, I'd appreciate it. Can I ask you, I'm not going to ask you any questions. Can I ask you if you have any questions for me?
Yes, a public comment period is not, not...
I understand. Just wanted to give you space.
It's for us to listen, not to ask questions.
I understand. We appreciate you, man, and we're praying for you, all of y'all.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on a different subject? We asked that only one person speak on one subject. Okay? Thank you. All right, we'll move on to number two on the agenda, the winter storm report. Russell Green, Emergency Services Director.
Chairman Mayberry, Commissioners, County Manager, it's an opportunity to stand before you tonight to say the bad report about the winter storm is, there is no bad report. That's the great thing. I really want to spend just a minute tonight to tell you, we started preparing for the storm on Wednesday into Thursday morning. If you remember, we had a school delay on Thursday morning with school staff. They did a great job with that. We did some reminders, the local radio station, the newspaper, with the social media, Chad with his social media. We started sending some stuff out on Thursday. And I really want to thank some folks tonight, and I hope I don't leave anybody out. But we ran a number of calls, but that number of calls was nothing out of the ordinary for us. They weren't weather-related. We had maybe one call that was weather-related, and we had one EMS unit get stuck that we had to call a record for. So out of the entire weekend, we were very successful, very profitable for us. We did declare a state of emergency on Friday, got to visit County Manager French and I, got to meet Chairman Mayberry, and got to see some actual sledding going on in his neighborhood. But we did, Chairman Mayberry signed our state of emergency, and Mayor Holloman did the same thing. And we do that as much as a precautionary measure. When the governor goes out there in front on Thursday and declares a state of emergency for the coming weekend, and the first flake hadn't hit the state of North Carolina, everybody's predicting the bad things. So if we do ever hit that threshold to get federal reimbursement, we got to have that paperwork in place. So we put that in place on Friday. We terminated those on Monday. Chairman Mayberry signed that one, and Mayor Holloman did as well. But throughout the weekend, our success is because of a couple groups. Our responders, our firefighters, rescue EMS guys, they made sure all their equipment was ready, prepared. They don't wait till the last minute. They're always prepared. We send out a few reminders because sometimes it's easy to forget things. I want to thank Manager French. He made his call early on Thursday to close offices on Friday. And I think that sent a very clear message to our citizens that we were taking the storm seriously, and we didn't want to be, anybody caught off guard. Excuse me. The same thing to Superintendent Hefner. They made their decision Thursday afternoon. That way, we didn't have buses out on the road on Friday morning. Storm hit about 2:30, 3 o'clock. And my big thanks goes out to our citizens. They listened to the message. They were out on Thursday afternoon. I had reports that some of our stores did more business on Thursday afternoon than they did the day before Christmas. They bought their groceries, and yeah, they bought all the bread and milk in probably every store in the county. And that's okay. I still hadn't, I still hadn't tolerated that milk sandwich yet, but one of these days, maybe. But they stocked up on Thursday. They stayed home Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And we were able to come back to work Monday morning on a regular schedule. We want to thank our citizens because that's huge for us. If they stay out of trouble, we have less calls. And the last group, two last groups, I'm sorry. Our county maintenance guys came out, cleared our parking lots on Saturday, dry on Sunday. And then, great thanks to our DOT employees. Super job. I keep hearing, well, I cross the county line, and I've always heard that. I experienced that for myself on Sunday morning. I was going up to help my dad do some stuff with his cattle, and I crossed the county line, and I was driving too fast for the conditions I ran into. Didn't wreck, but I come close. But the roads are different when you cross that county line. But really, I just want to tell you, the storm was, storm was technically a non-event for us. This is the file, got the paperwork. We tracked some expenses we had, very minimal for what it could have been. Our citizens did a great job. Our employees that don't usually get credit, our maintenance guys and our DOT guys, an exceptional job. And that's what I want to stand before you tonight and say, this county takes care of each other. And that's what makes it a great place to live. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but that concludes my report.
I have one statement. Not only was there no bread or milk, there were no chicken breasts in Bethlehem to be bought.
They cleaned out, did they?
And my wife was not happy because she had to change her menu.
Hey, Russ, I went, Saturday night, we had this delusional idea to go see a movie. And so we left our county into the joining county, and it was night and day different. I won't say which one. They actually have more roads, so I kind of understand why they're not as clear as ours. And then Sunday, the same thing, went to a different county Sunday morning. And, you know, our, our roads were superior. And I live in town, so also the town's roads were pretty immaculate. Kind of messed up sledding on the roads, but other than that, it's solid.
Town council did a great, town employees did a great job, and I don't want to exclude those. Those guys did a great job getting out there. And I will tell you what we have to remember about some of the surrounding counties. We don't have an Interstate 40, or an Interstate 77, or a 321, or a Highway 18, because that has to be their priority. And they do good job with those. When I got up 64 to Highway 18, it was clear, 321 was clear. But now from there on to where my dad lives in the northwest corner of Collesville, is a little rough. But I can tell you, our guys did a great job. And I communicate daily, two or three times a day with Cole at DOT. And he's great to tell us where the problems are. And actually, Manager French and I are trying to figure out something to do to show those guys our appreciation. So we'll keep working on that. But that's what I want to tell you. We can be proud of our citizens tonight because they did a great job.
Yeah, great job. My job kind of entails these things, and about every county around, it was a catastrophe for them. But we were really, you know, blessed. We were fortunate in Alexander County, no major accidents, you know, nothing going on, but...
Well, over the course of Friday morning, about midnight, Thursday night, Friday morning, till Monday morning, there were three motor vehicle accidents in Alexander County. And that, that's probably low for a typical weekend.
Probably better if they're now.
Yeah.
Everybody stayed at home, that's a good thing.
That's exactly right.
I'll mention one thing. We need to thank the Sheriff's Department EMS, our Detention Center employees. I mean, they don't get the day off when, when bad weather hits. They've got to be there. Also, you guys, they came over to my house, arrived there before naptime, about a two-year-old. So they didn't wake him up, and we signed that emergency declaration. So these guys have to get out and, and check on things, make sure everything's working properly. And North Carolina DOT, they did a super job too.
Sure did.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Anybody else? All right, thanks. We'll move on to item three on the agenda. That is the CBCC Applied, Alexander Applied Technology Center project update. Call on Darrell Robertson, County Engineer.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and do a little bit of update. I've got a little bit of history with this project that we need to go over first, I think, just so everybody will be aware of where it came from. And this is a first for me, so I may have to turn around and motion to get the picture up. But we'll, we'll handle it, and I'll let Jamie tell me tomorrow what I need to do different next time. The first drawing that's up there is basically the original Apparel Technologies building. The floor plan is what the county bought when they acquired that property. That building was built in 1996 by Greer Lackey to become Apparel Technologies, and it worked very well for him until, well, till textiles went away. He lost a lot of business with the movement of Levi. And the county acquired this facility in October of 2013. And, I'm sorry, 2012, October 2012, the county acquired this facility. And at that time, the county was talking with CBCC about the possibility of providing programs that would help our individuals acquire skills and also help our industries to have skills that would fit in. And we'll go to the next slide, which shows the building as it will now be laid out. There are three major training areas within the building. The welding technology program, the welding lab is on the southwest corner. The metallurgy lab is on the northwest corner. And then the furniture lab is the larger area, basically in the center portion of the building. And if you'll look to the very eastern side of the building, there is a showroom there. And we do have a little bit of future space down at the, along the south elevation. And I'll back up now and tell you a little bit about these areas and what's going to take place. The welding area is funded by, primarily by CBCC through the Golden Leaf Grant. They acquired the Golden Leaf Grant, which buys equipment for the welding area. There's like 20 welding stations plus other things in there. They also had money in that grant for the building outfit for the welding area. And that amount was $423,000, if I can quit fumbling and get back here to my right sheet. The building outfit portion of that grant was $423,600. So that's the first construction grant. Now, when CBCC applied for that grant, they also had applied for funds for a metallurgy program, which is in the northwest corner of the building now. That was not funded by the Golden Leaf Grant, but they secured a Duke Foundation grant for that portion. That grant also has equipment to be purchased by CBCC. It also has building outfit involved in it. The building outfit portion of that grant is $150,000. The EDA grant... The EDA grant is the umbrella grant, which the building construction falls under. And Alexander County secured that grant. And that grant recognizes the three grants. The Golden Leaf Grant, the Duke Foundation Grant, and the A R C Grant, which we'll come back to in a minute because that's an Alexander County grant for furniture equipment. But the EDA grant recognizes all three of those. And the EDA grant is one and a half million dollars for building upfit. And I want to stop just a second and thank our economic development group for helping put this program together to secure these grants because, as I mentioned, the building was bought in October 2012. That's when it actually transferred to the county. These grants were being worked on before that. So I want to note, you to know that. Also, Sherry Long, who's with the Western Piedmont Council of Government, has done an outstanding job in helping put together the paperwork that has to go with these. And I will also give Alexander County Finance some credit too because with these grants to the building, we have to be able to go back and retrieve and show everything that was charged against any one of those grants. And we now have it set up so that we can do that. The grants are broken down. Hickory Construction has done their payment application so that when we get it and we process it, we can identify what is Golden Leaf, what is Duke, what is EDA. And our finance group's doing an outstanding job of bringing that together now. One other little factor, and I mentioned Sherry Long, the EDA grant also requires compliance with Davis Bacon requirements. And I knew about Davis Bacon, but I could not imagine how much work it takes to make sure that every subcontractor on the job is in compliance. And Hickory's done a good job with it, Sherry's done a good job. We've gotten through the first payment application and it's in finance now. And it's about 70 pages thick with all the breakdowns that are required to make sure we have the compliance. Now, when we total up the grants for construction, the total funds available, $2,071,450. When we opened bids, Hickory Construction was the low bidder and their total was for, for everything involved in the project, $1,936,000, which leaves us a fund balance of $122,771 for the facility. Now, we also have some funds in contingency related to EDA grant, but we need to get a handle on where everything stands before we start talking about what else could we do. But that future area down there on the south elevation may need to be, we may be able to develop that before the building is completed. And the furniture program has been supported not just by Alexander County, but the industries in Alexander County. And we did a lot of work here in Alexander County to get the layout so that it'll work with the furniture industry, so that cutting, sewing, upholstery's taken care of. And we do have some area in that furniture laboratory for future expansion, for additions of programs as they need them. And we had a number of industries that went online with the county to underwrite this grant. And I'd like to mention their names just so everybody will be aware. HSM Solutions, Mitchell Gold, Bob Williams, Snyder Mills, Craftmaster Furniture, Hancock and Moore, Paladin Industries, Taylor King, Premium Cushion, Liggett and Platt, and Haynes Industries. All those have been involved in this for some period of time. And the only frustration that I have heard is how long does it take? And when you explain, this process goes through state agencies, it goes through federal agencies, and it's all got to be documented, every I dotted, every T crossed. Then they begin to understand, but the very important thing with that furniture lab will, it will help create basic skills for a generation that we've lost in the furniture industry. And it will also help the furniture industry in that when people come to work, they will have some basic skills, plus they will be aware of what will be expected and required of them as they progress. Next shot is the welding lab, also shows the classroom and office areas. We did add another entrance to the building, which is seen there on the north side, because the way the, the training areas lay out, students and instructors will have a better direct shot coming in that rear entrance than going the length of the building and then coming back the length of the building. So that entrance was planned to provide access for the welding lab, the metallurgy and for the furniture area. The elevations of the building and you can see the main entrance will be on the northeast corner. It'll have an entrance so that when you park in the parking lot and you look at the building, you can tell which way you ought to go to be expecting receptionists and getting in the building. The entrance to the metallurgy and welding and furniture is, well, you can spot it there toward the, the rear of the building. And I think that entrance will be used more than the main entrance, but it will provide access for the students and the instructors. The, there was some effort put into the project before it went out for bids. This is a picture of the parking. And both of these pictures on the north side, the parking areas up there are 20 years old. And because of traffic, truck traffic, weather and so on, they were the point where they needed to be upfit. And that is included as part of this project to repave. We did do some investigation before the project went out for bids and we found out by examination that the mechanical units were to the point where they needed to be replaced. And the mechanical units are being replaced as part of this project. The original building was set up to be heated using propane. And if you can remember back 20 years ago, as I sometimes can, in those days propane was a good way to heat a building. But because of the changes in price, propane has gotten more expensive. And this building will change to a natural gas system and we'll see a little bit on that in a bit, in a minute. But all the mechanical units are changing, the building will be heated using natural gas. This picture was made of the inside of the building, the toilet area and the service to it. When the building was built, it was industrial and it complied with ADA requirements and so on. The new classification, because this building will now be used for community college, it's above school level, so it is classified as a business. And because it's a business, code requirements changed, plus in 20 years, the codes have changed as far as ADA compliance. And we'll see a little more on that. With any building now, you have to do an assessment. We did a bold mill view assessment as well as an asbestos assessment. We did find some mold and mill view in three locations in the building. This is one of them. Those areas will be removed and corrections made. This is the old examining room where it was a dark room once upon a time. And you can see, this is one of the areas and you can see some of the, the moisture problems in there. Another shot of the same area. This is standing in the existing building before anything was done, looking toward the west elevation. The blue door on the very right leads you into the metallurgy area. The double doors we're looking at takes you right into the welding area. The building was well maintained and was in good shape when we acquired it. This is standing in the same place, looking toward the east elevation of the building. Everything looks, looks good. This is looking at the mechanical units on the south elevation of the building. The building was very well maintained. This is the toilet area that you saw just a little bit ago. As I said, the old one did not comply with code. We, it was torn out and the plumbing has been roughed in for the new toilets that will be constructed. This is the same area, just a little further back. This is the north or the east elevation, looking toward the north wall. The HVAC equipment is being installed. This was probably taken about three to four weeks ago. The mechanical contractor started this on the east side, moving toward the west. And we'll see the follow-up that takes place. You can also see on the east elevation there that the contractors began to cut out the brickwork to install windows in the showroom area. This is standing in the same area, looking toward the west side of the building. Sprinkler materials have come in and a little bit of work being done in the, the wall into the welding area. This is a close-up. We have, we're installing a, a door from the classroom area into the welding area. And the window is in an office so that the instructor can observe what's going on even if he's in the office. This is standing in front of that door, looking back toward the east end. Sprinkler contractor is working. You can see his stuff laying there on the floor. And in the back, you'll see steel studs that have come in to start some framework. This is in the welding area, the sprinkler contractor is working. You can see he's got a little rough end done, he's got his materials laid out to continue installation. This is looking at the northeast corner where the new entry will be constructed. The batter boards are set and you can see where they've cut just a little bit on the wall. This is the wall for the furniture area. We're standing on the south side of the building, looking toward the north. This is the furniture lab's east side wall. This is turning, looking down the corridor. This is the furniture lab wall that runs east to west. This is standing in the entry on the north side. The steel studs you see on there, there on the right are the new restroom that's framed in where the old one was torn down and the corridor that leads around the building. The sprinkler contractors work very hard to stay ahead of everybody. You can see his rough end moving from east to west. This is standing on the east side, looking toward the west and you can see the rough end. The HVAC duct work is there. And if you look very hard, you can see that the west side of the furniture lab has been framed in. This is on the, the east end. HVAC work is continuing. Fire protection lines are in place and it gives you a little bit better shot of where the windows will go on the east elevation. This is in the south side. This is the classroom office area. I'm sorry, this is a, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. This is the east side, another shot of the, where we're going there. Foundations are being dug. Those have been placed now on the, for the entrance into the building, rebar in place. And now we're back to where I thought we were a minute ago. This is the we, west side. We're looking down where the classrooms and offices will be. Plumbing has been roughed in for toilets going back there. The HVAC contractor's getting his duct work ahead and you can see the metal studs there on the east side. This is, PSNC has tied in, they extended the gas line tied in. And that's the gas line coming up the hill toward the building. There's the stub up where service will come into the building. And a good close shot of the stub up, just to show that it's real. And this is the last slide. And I felt like it's appropriate to again, recognize the fact that our economic development folks and Western Piedmont Council of Government secured an EDA grant, which if we had, if they had not done that, this project would not have been a reality. I had mentioned earlier, the, the funds that are going into this thing. And Alexander County is a key in securing it and planning it and carrying it out, but we could have never have done it without the others. Hickory Construction Company has done a real good job as far as organizing the project and working to make sure that we try to keep things straight, accurate and to the point as we go through. And again, I'll mention our economic development, I'll try to say it, our economic development people have worked to get the grants. And again, Sherry Long has done an outstanding job in the correlation, coordination and helping with those grants. And if you have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Make any questions?
Darrell, target date for completion, you might want to mention that, just.
Why, sure, as quick as we can. The construction timeframe was five months. Construction actually started first of December. So we should be, I'm going to say, end of April, early May as far as completion. And the reason I'm, I'm saying that is because there are some things that have come up that, with equipment and so on, that may take a little bit of time, that not really construction's fault, but construction will be impacted by it. We, as the project was getting set up, well, as a matter of fact, it gone out to bid, CBCC and the welding equipment had equipment for welding ventilation. And that equipment needed to go in with building instruction because it needed to tie in with duct work. There's some foundation work, there's support work, electrical, mechanical tie-ins. So they did get permission from Golden Leaf to move that from welding equipment to building construction. So we're now in the process of trying to get that all straightened out, incorporated. So there's little things like that that will, could impact the final completion date. But there was also some time in there as far as getting equipment set up for operation that we won't delay that at all. And we're in the process now of, on Alexander County's side anyway, trying to get set up with the, to get proposals for the furniture equipment. And CBCC is starting to work on the welding equipment.
So it's pretty much on target right now?
It is, it is. And we had last Wednesday of every month's project meeting. Every Wednesday, there is a meeting with the contractor, with me, whoever will be there. But the last meeting of the month is project meeting. And last Wednesday, when we met, Jeff Herman with Hickory Construction went over his schedule. And there have been a few things that, well, this one's not quite, but generally everything's where it needs to be as far as maintaining the schedule.
Mr. Chairman, one, one comment I would make. This past week, I guess I was enlightened to some degree. I mean, I, you know, I knew the Applied Technologies project was a big deal. But a friend of mine, his 19-year-old daughter got a job in furniture as a sewer, basically. And, you know, starting pay for a 19-year-old was $14 an hour. That isn't bad. You know, I mean, we're not, you know, this isn't going to be teaching people minimum wage skills. You know, and, and what gets me is this was an untrained person who they started, they started at $14 an hour and they're going to train her how to do the job that they've hired her for. You know, so what does a person, what is a person paid that already has the skills? You know, I would imagine it'd be better than that. So, you know, these are, you know, these are very legit, I mean, not, you know, these are very legitimate skills that are going to make a lot of people's very legitimate careers.
These are good, middle income, family-supported type jobs. If you go back and look, when I was coming along, manufacturing wage went up, a lot of people went into furniture and so on and they made good living. When the free trade agreement came along, we lost a lot of industry in this area because. And now because of quality and expense and so on, it's come back. And we have, our furniture industry is in need of people in, all of them are needing people, especially in upholstery. And this program will give minimum skills so that. And this program will give minimum skills so that people can go to work in upholstery. It will also let them know what the job is about, so when they get there, they'll know, uh, what's ahead of them. And, uh, they can anticipate, uh, a good middle-income living, working in these skills.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number four on the agenda, resolution for adoption of the Western Piedmont Bicycle Plan. John Pilkington, county manager, oh, not county manager.
Hey, did I get a new job? Did they tell you that?
County planner.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the boards. Um, you do have tonight before your resolution to adopt the Western Piedmont Bicycle Plan. The good news for you guys is, is that I was not actually supposed to present this, and so, um, the average length of this presentation has been about forty-five minutes, and because I don't know as much about it as I should, you're not going to get that long a presentation. So, um, the main thing to know about this plan is that it is exactly that, a plan. It's not, um, it doesn't commit the county to, uh, spending any funds, um, it doesn't, uh, require, um, any, um, additional right-of-way to be obtained. It's just a plan. It's a guideline for future potential, uh, funding scenarios if there were grants available. Most of the, um, most of the, um, uh, roads that are involved are DOT roads, so they would be maintained by the, and, and like I said, it, it doesn't have any, any construction, uh, or any recommendations on construction built into it. But the plan, um, was set up by the Western Piedmont Council Governments, along with a steering committee, which consisted of, uh, numerous, um, of local officials, some elected, some, um, employees from municipalities and the county, uh, county manager Rick French and Chad Ritchie were a part of the steering committee and represented Alexander County. The Western Piedmont Bicycle Plan provides a framework for improving bicycle transportation in the four county areas of Alexander, Burke, Caldwell, and Catawba County. I believe there's a map. We are one of ten, um, regional bike plans that has been, uh, developed and, uh, soon to be adopted, um, by the region, uh, but we're one of ten in the state that has been completed. Uh, the project scope, uh, it was, there were six areas it was to address. Those include, uh, route networks, economic impacts of cycling, safety analysis, uh, laws and enforcement, um, meaning that, uh, it makes recommendations for bicycle-friendly policies, uh, in the codes and ordinances, um, roadway design and signage, and then Uh, the, as, as a part of the input process, the steering committee created a vision, goals, and policies to guide the development of the Western Piedmont Bicycle Plan and bicycle planning in the region for, excuse me, let me reword that, left out a comma. The committee created vision, goals, and policies to guide the development of the Western Piedmont Bicycle Plan and bicycle planning in the region for years to come. The following was developed over several months, and each goal has related policies that have been prioritized to the public. I'm going to kind of give you the ten thousand view. I think you all have the complete PowerPoint presentation, um, in your packet, and we'll have the complete presentation online for anybody that wants to look at it, just for the sake of time. Um, the, the committee adopted a vision that the region values bicycle use for its health, recreational benefits. Bicycles represent alternative transportation options for the community residents and visitors as an accessible, safe, healthy, and scenic way to reach places people want to go. The first goal in this was safety and engineering. I wanted to design the region's communities as a place where bicycle use is valued as a significant transportation mode. The second goal was transportation, to connect key bike routes to individual communities across the region. Goal three was recreation, to encourage bicycle use for different purp- purposes, ages, and skill levels. Goal four was health and education. Uh, bicycling provides and improves the community's physical and mental health. Uh, goal five was economic vitality, to strengthen the economic impacts of bicycling. There was, um, a selection methodology in creating tiers for, um, how the bicycle routes would be addressed. The routes that are discussed in the plan are organized into three different tiers. Assignment to the tier depends on several different factors that were led by attendees at public workshops, by the planning staff, and eventually by the steering committee. The process for determining, uh, route tiers was as followed. In April of two thousand and fourteen, uh, members of the public identified commonly-used routes at regional workshops. Um, there was a workshop held in each county. As you can see, uh, the county, uh, county commission meeting room is the first one on the left, or on the top left. Uh, in September of two thousand and fourteen, the routes were prioritized by attendees at a public regional workshop. In September and October of two thousand and fourteen, staff ranked the routes using an internal scoring system and methodology. In October of two thousand and fourteen, the steering committee members from each county made final recommendations using information gathered through both workshops and the staff rankings. That gives, that's kind of the ten thousand view of what the, um, bicycle plan is about. Again, um, you have a more detailed outlining in your packet. Uh, there's a couple of maps, um, in your packet as well, showing the, the regional bike, uh, um, regional areas and their tier ratings. As you can see, the high-tier areas were in, um, yellow, the medium tier were in orange, and the, uh, low tier were prioritized in, uh, red. So if you have any questions, I'd be, uh, happy to try to answer them.
Where does it go from here? What's the next step?
Well, the next step would, um, essentially be u- utilizing the plan when, uh, maybe funding becomes available to, uh, look at, um, a project, to, uh, identify routes, um, introduce signage to the area. If, um, if a road was substandard, uh, and needed additional shoulder work, there may be monies available, uh, through grants and things like that to extend shoulders to make it more, uh, bicycle-friendly. Um, it's, it's essentially, it's a toolbox and a guideline. It's kind of like, um, having, having it in place, so, um, it's one of those tools you have for when, um, if, if a grant for, uh, bicycle grant becomes available, you can say, hey, we've got a regional bike plan to address that's addresses these certain things, a- and if the grant is a specific area, you know, the, the bike plan may cover that. So it's, it's really, it's a tool to help in, in the future.
We, I had, had some, um, property over, around, well, nor around University a few years ago, and, uh, they actually bought some of my property for right-of-way through there for just a bike lane. Uh, it wasn't much, it was maybe six, eight, ten feet they bought off the front of it to put in a bike lane.
And, and this plan doesn't go that, to that detail to recommend anything like that. Um, a- and I think, um, you know, and that seems, sometimes is a concern, is that, is, does this mean that, you know, DOT is going to come on my property and, and take more right-of-way? And that, this plan does not, is not that detailed. That would only be if necessary if there was, um, a, a, a project in place to do something like that.
Uh, I got a question. The yellow tier one route, does that run out to Rocky Face Park? Is that where that ends up at?
Looked like to me. I'm not sure.
The geographic area I was looking at as well, I, I believe that, just following the road, and I, I'm not sure that it's exactly accurate, like where it shows on the map, because it looks like it may be a little further out, but that's basically the line that, uh, would come out of Rocky Face Park and then turn down, um, and come towards town.
So sixty-four ninety is obviously our highest priority, so.
Actually, it's, um, it's, it's in red. It's, it's yellow. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, uh, yes, going, heading towards Caldwell County.
Okay. And then it goes to medium, going towards Iroquois County, I assume, or actually goes to low, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's connecting the Western Piedmont region, so going that way would mean it goes outside the region, yeah.
And we're not, we're not doing anything. This is just a regional plan that they have to come up with, and we're just signing off on, hey, we did, or they did the plan, and...
A- and just adopting a resolution to, um, support the plan. I believe that's what the resolution says, um, I said, don't shoot the messenger, um...
Now, we'll tell you this, um, my wife and I bought bicycles for Christmas. That was our Christmas presents for each other, and, uh, so this past weekend, we weren't even thinking about this, uh, bicycle plan, but she said, let's go to the Morganton Greenway and go up there and, and ride the bikes. So we got a trip planned to take the kids and go up there and ride on the greenway, and I'm sure it's going to cost some money to do it and go out to eat and eat at a restaurant and all that, so maybe it's a good thing if there are grant funds available out there to put in a bike, bike lanes.
I think you go up into Virginia, and I think Mr. Sains may be where the, the trails that are with the railroads, that's been a huge economic driver up there.
Virginia Creeper Trail.
Yeah, Virginia Creeper.
Traveler's Rest, which is north of Greenfield, at the end of the Swamp Rabbit Trail. Rail to Trail Magazine had an article, and there was a six million dollar impact in Traveler's Rest.
Yeah. Wow. Okay. Sorry to sidetrack everything. Go ahead. We need to, uh, I guess we need to vote on this, uh, resolution?
You need to vote to adopt a resolution, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the, or adopt a resolution, um, and I'm sorry, I've already flipped the pages. Adopt, yeah, resolution in support of the Western Piedmont Bicycle Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion, a second, it's a red discussion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me. Um, item four on the agenda is the resolution for adoption, I'm sorry, resolution supporting the, uh, Connect North Carolina Bond Act. Calling Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, in your packet, you have the resolution, uh, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is recommending each county, uh, consider and support, uh, this resolution, which supports, uh, funding to seventy-nine counties in North Carolina. It also includes funding for water and sewer grants and loans. It's funds for, uh, community colleges, education, parks and recreation, and, uh, is in seventy-nine counties. Unfortunately for us, it's not in Alexander County, but at Catawba County, CBCC has over six million dollars, uh, included in this, uh, bond act that will be considered, uh, but the association is asking all counties to support it. They have a website set up, and I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me, but, uh, we'd recommend you move forward with it. I don't know if I can answer any of your questions or not about this, but I'll be glad to try.
Uh, I'll just make a comment. I think it's, uh, two billion dollars is the total. Is that, uh, two billion even? Is that? There's, there's not been a tremendous amount of information out there, and a lot of it that has been out there is incorrect, so I've been trying to do some research to find out before the meeting, um, what I could about the North Carolina Connect Bond. Um, it's two billion dollars. I did hear some misinformation that, uh, I mean, you hear a lot of this, and you have to wade through it, but, uh, one, one person, um, who's been sending out emails, I guess, to all of us and other elected officials in North Carolina, was saying, you know, it's going to cost eight hundred million dollars a year in interest, and, uh, I think that would be kind of a bad deal, uh, if you're just borrowing two billion dollars, so, uh, there's a lot of misinformation, wrong information, people are presenting it wrong. Uh, what I have been able to, to gather and, um, um, is that this money's going for the community college system, water and sewer, and parks and public facilities. Alexander County doesn't benefit directly. Seventy-nine other counties in North Carolina do get direct funding for whatever those projects may be. Uh, I did have a email from, uh, Dr. Garrett Henshaw, who's the president of CBCC, and, uh, of course, it's up to the CBCC Board of Trustees, uh, as to what the needs are, but, uh, there's no money that's specifically allocated for Alexander County, but, you know, it's, it's not out of the realm of possibilities that this facility may, um, see some benefit if that bond package passes. I also think that, uh, we probably, um, will be able to use, uh, some of the money in the clean water and sewer systems, uh, for that, because we're constantly trying to find new ways to, uh, put in, um, water lines at, at the lowest cost possible and using grant funds. So just had a comment. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I know probably a lot of people don't really realize, I know I haven't seen many even, you know, campaign signs, but, so this is the bond that will be voted on in the primary?
Correct. That's right. Correct. The, um, everyone who votes has a chance to vote yes or no on this bond. So it's up, up to each citizen to go out and find out, you know, uh, correct and accurate information on that bond, and that might be something the newspaper can help us out with, so, uh...
Right, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, Alexander County has representation on the CBCC?
Yes, we do.
And that is Jeremy Fortner and John Watts.
Yes, we have two representatives on the Board of Trustees, correct. Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion?
I'm moved to approve the resolution.
Second.
Third.
The reason behind it is because, you know, there's a, there's a lot of good things that's going to come out of this to support different individual counties. And the one thing about the bond referendum is that the money that would be going to the community college, of course, most of you should also realize that this will be a two-to-one match. I mean, no bond, no money that you're going to get is going to be free. There's going to be a match there, but if you look at all the possibilities that's going on here in Alexander County and what we're trying to do here at CBCC with expanding education, and not just education for the students at the high school, but education for our citizens here, this is an opportunity for us to be able to get more funding for what we need to do here at CBCC to present more opportunities for our citizens, and it will cost the county less money if we're able to get this bonding. And therefore, and that's, that's my reason behind it, and if, knowing the, and, and being involved in North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, knowing the things that they've done and the research they've done, it's good for all the counties and the things going on. Um, I, I, I just think it's, uh, th- this part of the bond referendum is a, is a win-win situation, I think, for, uh, the citizens of North Carolina, and, uh, I think it's a win-win situ- situation, especially for small rural communities, to give us access to funding that we will need in order to progress our counties and to make life better for our citizens.
Doesn't it also have some, um, funds for col- universities and colleges as well?
I believe it does.
I think it does, and you think, I think Appalachian State's one of the beneficiaries of this, and quite frankly, we have a lot of students from Alexander Central that go to universities, so, I mean, I think it has a, it's bigger than us, so to speak.
Yes, correct.
And, and one thing I would say, um, Commissioner Yoder mentioned that no, no, no money is free, um, and he mentioned the two-to-one match. To, I guess, explain that simply, um, in a two-to-one match situation, if a county or, you know, someone is to receive, um, say, a million dollars, um, the, you know, county or, um, institution that is receiving those funds would have to match that with five hundred thousand dollars, which means you'd get two dollars free ma- you know, you get two dollars for every one that you, that you would invest. So one dollar turns into three dollars, um, basically, is the way that...
So one dollar turns into three dollars, basically, is the way that two-to-one match works.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. A resolution. Excuse me. Item number six on the agenda, Alexander County Board of Education Facility Needs Survey, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Rick French.
In your packet, you have a copy of the Facility Needs Survey provided to you by our superintendent, and this is a requirement every, that every five years, local boards of education are required to do, to submit their facility needs assessment to the State Board of Education. And you have the information in your packet outlined by school, the summary of projects and the estimated costs for, for each. Total of the, all the information is about eleven million dollars. Tonight, we're asked to, if you'll look at the very back page, it asks if the county commissioners have, they have received and reviewed a copy of the survey prior to submission to the State Board of Education, and this does not necessarily constitute endorsement or commitment to fund the Facility Needs Survey. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you have about it.
Unless I'm mistaken, I think this kind of follows the survey, I think, might have been Dr. Wumble that did it in two thousand twelve, thirteen? I don't remember, but I think I've seen this before, unless mistaken. And I assume it's just updated a little bit for any changes or priorities.
All it is is saying that we have received this survey.
Right.
We're not committing any county dollars to any projects at this time.
Do we need a motion to accept this? I'll make that motion.
Second. Excuse me, is there a second? Did you say?
Yes.
Same time, sorry. I got a motion in the second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously to accept the Alexander County Board of Education Facility Needs Survey, two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen. I'm sorry, you guys, I know it's painful to watch. Item number seven on the agenda, Alexander County Finance Report, Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to request we move on to item number eight. We'll, after our closed session, which we anticipate being quite lengthy tonight, we'll have a session on the county finances that'll be open, an open session. So if we could, I'd recommend we go on and skip this part of, of the agenda and return to it after the closed session and consent agenda that we have.
Okay. All right. Is there any?
Number eight is the Alexander County Appointments Equalization Review Board. Appoint Donovan Douglas for one year, reappoint Doug Ramsey, David Odom, Linda Barnett, Bobby Norton for one year. Health Board appoint Betty Long, three years. Western Piedmont Council of Government, Sister Cities Association, reappoint Dwight Shook one year, and David Eisenhower as the alternate. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council appoint Darren Connor, Phil Heffner, Darrell Davidson one year, reappoint Chris Bowman, Carrie Nitzu, Kristy Hyatt, Holly Young, Milton Campbell, Rick French, Jason Williams, Ken Colwork, Jerry Ratchford, Jan Behringer, and Miki Cahill. Region E, Adult Care and Nursing Home, CAC, appoint Glenn Deal one year. Finance Committee appoint Larry Yoder. And we still have some openings in the Health Department and Building and Services Advisory Committee.
I make a motion to accept these recommendations.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item number nine on the agenda, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number twenty-six through twenty-eight, Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment number twenty-six, increase the sheriff's budget for purchase of items with federal equitable share funds received from Homeland Security in prior years. Fund balance, these special funds must be used to increase the law enforcement budget. Items to be purchased, as a camper shell for Ford F-250 truck, K-9 kennel lights, in-car Milwaukee chargers. In addition, part of the cost of the K-9 kennel will be paid from supplies budget with two hundred, two hundred dollars of that donated to the sheriff's office to be spent on K-9 equipment, not two hundred thousand, two hundred dollars. Budget Amendment number twenty-seven is to increase the Health Department Dental Clinic Budget for Oral Health Partnership Grant, and to increase the Health Department Budget for Public Health Quality Improvement Funds to be spent for items related to state accreditation process. And number twenty-eight, Budget Amendment twenty-eight, is to increase the EMS Budget for the Medicaid Program reimbursement payment, reimbursement payment required by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. This payment is a result of the NCDHHS Desk Review of the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven EMS Medicaid Costs Report, which adjusted the report as originally filed. Be glad to try to answer any questions about the budget amendments, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any questions? All right, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve as stated. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me do this again. I make a motion to accept Budget Ordinance Amendment number twenty-six, number twenty-seven, and number twenty-eight.
Second.
As stated.
Got a motion in the second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you, Mr. French. Item number ten, Other Business, County Managers' Report, Rick French, county manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things to mention. One is that the Sheriff's Department has applied for a two thousand sixteen Governor's Crime Commission Grant. The funding is, is a hundred percent grant for twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars, and there's no county dollars attached to that at all. Also have some numbers in your, in your information. We had thirty-six hundred, three thousand six hundred and twenty-two visitors at the Hidnite Arts and Heritage Center, Alexander County Visitor Center in two thousand fifteen. We had over eighteen thousand five hundred and twenty-nine visitors at Rocky Face Park in two thousand fifteen. And another item that was reported in, in our Times was nineteen hundred and twenty-eight runners participated in running events in Alexander County in two thousand fifteen. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions. I do have some items for closed session until we do the finance thing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. French. Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in the second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. And before I say this, the reason we skipped number seven is because it's liable to be very lengthy, and we have people here for closed session that probably need to be leaving before we get through with this. So anyway, we're trying to hurry through this. The, we're going to go into closed session per, per North Carolina General Statute one four-three dash three eighteen point eleven to prevent, prevent the disclosure of confidential information, economic development, contractual, and personnel. I'll make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, all those in favor signify by.
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Now, are we going into closed session to, to discuss item number seven?
No.
No.
No, we're not.
I just, because I didn't hear. I just wanted to make sure.
Now, we will come back into open session after the closed session to discuss, discuss the finance report.
Very good.
Okay. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.